It will be.
Ever, it's never been touched.
Never been out except Sundays.
Yeah, you could get in an accident with that one.
Put the thing upside down and still.
My mom had three of them. The lady in town would buy a brand new and then she traded it for rods and my mom would buy it.
Oh, yeah?
Yep. They're good vehicles back then.
Yeah, you're good sport.
My mechanic asked me if I. Noticed it filled up, uh shut off too soon. I was having a problem with the gas tank sensor. I filled it up and I said, I don't know, I've not filled it up, so.
Does it have a sensor on it for me?
It's it's.
Never seen your car so I haven't.
It doesn't have a.
No.
Christina, you have the roll.
I do.
Thank you. We, uh.
All approve tonight's agenda?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for. Now, the motion and the second is there? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. None, motion carries. We have a public hearing we're supposed to do too.
Yep. So this will be short and sweet because I'm not reading. That's why Mike showed up this time because we didn't have a little senior talk.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
So at the last work session, um I read both the ordinance for, um. Uh farm animals in the city of Black Duck ordinance twenty-five oh one. I have received no public comment or feedback since that last meeting. Um in addition, I read twenty-five oh two, which was the ordinance amending the rental licensing. For renewal, um procedures. I have also received no comments on that as well. So I don't know if you want to ask the public tonight for any. For both, for either one of them at the same time, that should suffice and then we can move forward to the council meeting.
Good. Is there any public question, comment?
I don't know. We don't know what we're on about, but we'll go for it.
Chickens. Chickens. Wanted chickens.
See, none, Christina.
Perfect.
Your public.
Open our consent agenda or reader meeting.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. You have to approve another agenda.
Mm-hmm, yes, you do.
Would someone like to approve the actual meeting agenda?
I will, I will reapprove the meeting agenda for tonight's meeting.
You go aside, second bat. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and none, motion carries. All items on the consent agenda will be passed in one council motion unless there's something we need to remove for further discussion.
I have a question.
He isn't Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion to approve minus item P, please.
I want to be approved. Why is the item P?
The consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. None, motion carries. Go on.
Slow down here, you four, my goodness. Let me get there.
Monday night. Monday night raw.
Yeah. Okay. Proceed, please, now that I'm caught up taking your notes, thank you very much.
That is for the pond, so Shonda found a new vendor.
Okay.
And, uh, they would only take a credit card for limit on her card. As high as mine, so.
Oh.
It was put on my account.
Yep. Have no question.
Yep. I was, yep. And she was.
Alright, so I will make a motion to approve item P. Uh, any further discussion on it? All in favor? I. Opposed. Motion carries. Two reports. Maybe some city staff. Monique. It's been a while.
No. Uh, I don't have much, it's been kind of. The time of breakdowns for us, mowers get serious, we've had lots of fun working with them, so. Uh, the dry weather was kind of nice for us, now that the rain has picked up, the grass is moving pretty good. Was able to get some summer help, it's been challenging finding people and challenging. Just to schedule people, we've got three people, you know, generally I run two, but I have three because I have. Alternating schedules for some, so. Is what it is, they're working out pretty well, learning quickly. Um, tomorrow. Minnesota pump will be showing up to do the forestry lift station check valves and some repairs up on the black mallard. Lift station, which is up on Liberty Drive up there. Hopefully that'll go smoothly, um. Other than that. Kind of business as usual. Pulled a bunch of. Black dirt for the golf course from Misty's farm up there, you guys did that. Helped out with some T-box work out there. Like you say, just kind of small, business as usual stuff, nothing big. Anything for me?
Uh compliments on cemetery.
Memorial weekend.
Memorial weekend.
We tried to, you know, that.
It's a, it's tough to time it.
Yeah.
Quickly, but.
It's hard, but with with the dry weather that we had, it made it easier, so. We mowed as late as we possibly could before they wanted to put standards, you know, and put all the standards out for them. And then they wanted to put their flags out on. Friday, I think it was, so. We kind of tried to mow it Thursday morning and put standards out Thursday afternoon slash evening. Ran it as tight as we could, we tried to keep it nice out there. Best weekend anyways. Appreciate it.
One, let you know.
Appreciate that. Thanks, guys.
Shonda?
Um, I don't have a lot, uh, we we had a busy last half of May. Um, as far as business wise, we, um. Again, are running through the same thing, we could use some more help. Um, you know. Specifically, specifically cooking, another part time cook. Um, because it's getting busier, like this is a busy season, so one person can't do it, like.
Yeah.
You know, uh, two bartenders will throw on the kitchen. If you don't have two people back there.
Yeah.
Um, so we're still looking, so if you know. Anybody who want to come and. Throw some burgers around. Uh, last couple of weeks, we've, uh, had meat raffles on Thursday nights, um. So far, that's been really well received, they want more boards, um, of course, but we're going to try to keep it. You know. Maybe another board, but just keep it special, like you come in, you get. You know, just throw over, give people who are coming in for happy hour idea and then have them stay over to. Breakfast or breakfast. Stay over till breakfast next morning and five years, three minutes of those days.
I don't, I don't remember us doing that.
No, uh, stay over, you know, maybe have something to eat, um, maybe win breakfast. I was going with that, um. But, yeah, uh. We were approached by a couple of ladies, um, they do main course menus. So they design a menu for you and then they go to outline businesses. And get ads and that's how they pay for their time and materials. So I have the, uh. Christina and Jenny and, uh, Christina. Contact me, she had a nice menu and they were going to go see if there would be, anybody would be interested in putting a little square on our menus. For advertising for around town.
Sure.
So what they do for the golf course score cards. Right, exactly, exactly, um, and then they have, you know, really nice paper and.
Do I see that?
Uh, the stuff that they're going to put ours on is a little, it's a little stiffer than that, so. A little thicker. Yeah, well, yeah, that 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 would not be the size of menu. That's a sample. Big design and.
Yep.
So I've been always been peeling it kind of ourselves on camera. And then just having it laminated, which we appreciate it, I mean, it is very helpful. Um, but they don't, the durability of them, they get damp, they start peeling, you know, and it doesn't take long, they start looking.
True.
But I think that'd be a nice professional look, so hopefully, um.
Will they be approaching the the chamber?
I don't know, I gave them a list of every. Buddy I could think of, including I gave Tara, um. I gave her them her name at choice therapy, thinking that that would be. I mean, that's kind of been Choise's wheelhouse and then also she's a member of the chamber and.
Kind of looks like something Restaurant Seventy-One used to do. Uh, maybe, or I'm thinking of something similar to that.
Yeah, and I, well, I told him that like everywhere I go, it's always a black menu with white writing, I mean, it's. That's a lot, like, I said, I really like does not to look like that, to do something a little different. Um, she sent me a sample, I can send it to Christina, she will get the final proof.
That's nice.
If they look at it or I'll bring one home, if it goes through, I mean, I'm. I'm hoping.
Yeah.
True.
They're local too. They're two one eighters. Yes, yes.
They're not six five oneers.
No. Or five oh sevens. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's all I really have, we have seven buttons.
You don't have anything for you.
I will zoom up. Thank you.
Alright.
Uh, that brings us to you, Christina.
Great, I will, um, invite the representatives. Do you discuss?
Here, do we come up there or?
You can do whatever you're comfortable with, we're relaxed.
Okay, you're relaxed, we'll sit right here.
Yeah, oh, look at you got an eager beaver.
I want to make this though stand up there.
Yeah.
Um, hi, my name's, I will stand to you. Uh, my name's Tara Sutton and, um, I actually work at the Black Duck School. But my daughter is part of the trap, uh, the Black Duck Trap Club. And we are here representing the Black Duck Trap Team and to ask for some donations. And I brought some athletes with me to kind of tell their story. Um, we are, we have this year thirty-three athletes. Uh, with the Black Duck Trap Team and we just. May eighteenth, we were in Bemidji for a tournament. This coming week, uh, Thursday, Wednesday night, we'll all be traveling over to Alexandria. And then, uh, we will all, the kids will shoot on Thursday. And then on, uh, July and July, the first part of July, we'll take seven athletes to Nationals. Which is in, uh, Michigan. And, um, so, yeah, I'd like the boys to, I'm going to put them on the spot a little bit, just tell. What the trap club has meant to them shooting and having this experience in Black Duck. You can tell your names and.
So you go first, you go first.
This is Travis and Colin, this is Colin's first year, he did fall and then now spring. And then this is Travis's second year, he did fall and spring fly, so he's done it four times. Another team ended in second place this year. And they did really well.
So go ahead. Y'all can talk now.
I love being in trap, I like to be outdoors and shooting guns and do whatever I can outside and. Track this perfect opportunity, there's some. Pretty cheap and.
Two rounds of twenty-five, you know. Averages, well, that's what the team, each each time they shoot that, Travis averages about forty, sometimes a little more. Colin's more in the thirty-five range average.
So no twenty-fives yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Travis had a twenty-four one, so. Getting, he's getting there. And I put an attachment there, I gave it to Christina and that kind of shows all the other, um, places that we're asking for funds, but mainly we're asking for funds. For the tournaments. Um, to help these kids go to all the tournaments and like Alexandria, the parents only have to put up, um. Like. I think they're paying seventy-five dollars per athlete for the hotel room. And then the parents have to cover the rest and stuff, but then you have all your administration fees that you have to pay for Alexandria. So the tournaments are really where our big expense is, but we represent Black Duck well, as always. Um, our team does, our, all of our athletes are very respectable wherever we go. And I know in the hotel where we stay in Alexandria, everybody talks very highly of our athletes and stuff, so. That's our, that's our spiel. No. So do you have any questions? If I don't, I've never done this before, so, but I've been part of the trap club with, um, my daughter Ava. For eight, nine, ten, this is going on her fifth year, she's starting in seventh grade, so, um. But if I don't know the answer, I can't get a hold of the information. From Tiffany Wong, because she knows everything. So do you have any questions or?
Who's the, uh, who's coaching?
So it's Shannon.
Good.
Shannon, um. I just lost his last.
I don't know how to say it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Morris. Frendle.
Good.
And then we have a new guy.
Charlie, what's Charlie's?
And then Tony Long.
Okay.
Are our coaches. Yeah, and they've been, yeah, we practice. Well, we compete su- every Sunday that started in, we do dry fire at, uh, Matt and Stacy Swedberg's. Garage, starting in February, and then when the snow kind of starts them out a little bit in March, we go out to Kellyer. Uh, trap club, the sportsman club out there, and we do it every Sunday afternoon at two. And so the season kind of has ended now, except for this Alexandria tournament coming up. Um, next, this week, actually, we leave on Wednesday and then Nationals in July and that'll be in Michigan, so.
So I have one question that I keep thinking about, do you, I I understand that the Midges. Facility is brand new and it's really large, has there ever been any talk in history, especially since you, Ava's been in for a long time? That the club and the sportsman's club will be able to host. A competition.
Competition.
I mean, I realize it's a drive down that road, but.
It would take a lot, it would take a lot of. Don't you think it would take a lot more? Because there's only three.
And Bemidji must have.
And Bemidji, they have.
They have quite a few.
Yeah. Yeah, no. And Bemidji's, their actual team is running about probably ninety-five.
Yeah, a lot of kids.
Where ours Black Duck's about three.
Yeah, it would be great.
Mm-hmm.
If we could just spread it out over a few days, so you don't have so many.
Yeah, that would be amazing if we could do a competition up there.
Just my thought, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's looking for a different area to shoot, to shoot at.
Yeah, that, I could bring that up, that would be a, a cool idea.
Be really great for the sportsman's club.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
Can't imagine buses getting down that road, but.
True. True, it's a little rough area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's a great facility, you know.
No, yeah, and the kids love it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I gave you guys the history notes of the donations, um, it looks like the trap club is. Um. Got it penciled for like two thousand. Um, which is basically on par with what has been budgeted in the past. So the council's up to doing whatever they feel is. Appropriate.
Well, I don't have a problem doing what we've done in the past. This year.
I think it's a great thing. Gets out of trouble and.
Teach them how to use guns.
Yeah.
Well, the right button.
And the budget we developed was based on what we donated to all the groups last year, right?
Yes, Ron, that is correct.
So as long as we're within that. Oops, the club. Now, before that.
So I need a motion, someone, second bat.
Are we doing that?
We need.
Two thousand fifty or two thousand?
I need somebody to do. A muscle.
Motion that we. Do the two thousand fifty, the same as twenty twenty-four for that track club.
Okay.
Uh, well, second bat.
Is there any further discussion on it?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Very none, motion carries.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
And. Good luck. I I'm sure you're skilled, but luck never hurts.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you guys have good weather. It really warms out there sometimes.
Onward. Onward, okay, so now I'm at the point where I need the council to approve. Ordinance two thousand, twenty twenty-five oh one.
Make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash one.
I will second that.
Do we have any discussion on this? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. None, motion carries.
Item C is, uh, the approval of ordinance two thousand twenty-five oh two for the rental licensing amendment.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh two. Second one.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed. None, motion carries.
Um, next item I need approval on is resolution two thousand twenty-four. One-six, provision one. Uh, adding a fee for permitting chickens within the city of Black Duck. Item number ninety-five on. Page four of that resolution.
Take a motion to approve resolution number two. Twenty twenty-four dash one-six.
All second bat.
Is there any discussion on it? All's buried. I opposed, very none. Resolution passes.
Uh, the next item I have for discussion is the, um. Ordinance two thousand twenty-five oh three, I've been working on to update the Lakeview Cemetery. Um, rules, the council had asked for feedback regarding mandating vaults. Um, at the cemetery. Um, I emailed some. Regional. Um, cities, I got combat back from East Grand Forks, Sabika and Burndale. Um, two of them do. One of them doesn't. Um, I also emailed our local, um. Cease, um, Curtis, I spoke with him. And he's not in favor of it. So you got fifty of one and fifty of another. You guys can deem however you want to do that, but.
I know how. I'm thinking on the matter, but Mike, what are your thoughts on it out there?
On requiring bolts for every.
For every internment.
I mean, are there so many out there now that don't have vaults?
Well, it's.
It's really not going to make.
It's quite obvious which ones don't, right, out there, you know, the way the ground is in the area to begin with is. Not real conducive to a cemetery, really, to tell you the truth.
That was my point.
Um. To your point, yes, there are already so many out there. You know. We have.
I mean, do we allow it in some sections and not?
Well, and and that's the other thing, we have two.
Very large sections that are essentially empty right now, right, they're, they're the. I wouldn't be one bit, you know, opposed to definitely saying, yeah, I'll put them in there. You know, the older section is already built, we're not selling anything in the older section anymore.
So then the the newer sections that we're already selling, now, what about those people that have already purchased those plots, but they then?
The. Going forward, so it's like if you. Drop the speed limit to fifty-five from sixty, are you going to continue going sixty? Well. The rule is now fifty-five, you have to abide by it. So what changes, why would you? I mean, we set the same rules for chickens and the rental ordinance is, we're not going to say, oh, I'm sorry, you've been renting. You know, as a landlord for the last six years, now you're the girls, you don't have to follow the new ones, doesn't make any sense. I mean, if you raise your prices, pay the same prices that are just raised, not what you paid yesterday, so. No, if you change a rule, you follow it.
I will say. As of now. The two main spots, like you said, you've started to sell, there are not many, I don't believe, yet.
Not, not a ton, but.
However, the, what would be the west side of the, the western road out there.
Yeah.
You know, the top of the hill is one thing versus the bottom of the hill.
Right.
Right, just like what, you know, in the older part out there. So the bottom of the hill is where it can get pretty gnarly, really down there. You know, I've seen a few collapse down there. Um. With that being said, you have an area that is on the east side of the westerly road there. That's at the bottom of the hill too, that is not. Really occupied yet, is it?
The one between. The occupied part in in Love City.
Well, no. East side of the western road.
Oh, there's a lot of spaces that are filled, that are, that are purchased, but not.
Purchased, but no one is in.
Not a lot of internments, no.
I would suggest for that area. That if you're going to do this in the other two, that it might not be a bad idea to do it right there too, it might not be a bad idea to save. All of it.
This, this is what I want.
From here on.
Is to make internments. Necessary going forward.
If you go out there and you look around right now. You know, the way the headstones are and everything is, is on. You know, the way the headstones are and everything is is on the family, right, of. The the deceased there. And you look at them and you look at the ones that are sagging, dropping, drooping from. Ground shifting from there not being a vault underneath, right, that's a lot of what it is. Eventually, those wooden boxes decay, they drop. So on. The way that this is all set up is that it's not the responsibility of the city to care for headstones. Right? However, we're getting to a point out there where there are people that have been there so long. That there's no family left, right, there's no one left to care for them. So if we're gonna make the cemetery look halfway decent, we have to go and do those now. So by doing the vault portion of it. That helps to keep the ground less likely from faltering and those headstones falling. And us having to do the work on them, because again, the the cemetery. Really doesn't make any money, the cemetery really doesn't even do enough to care for it most of the time, budget wise. I mean, I go over the numbers all the time, the amount of time we spend out there, i- it doesn't come out. But it's our city cemetery, right, we need to take care of it, I think this would be a good step. In helping to lower future costs for us, hopefully, I mean, it's not gonna be for any of us, but. Hundred years from now, people might look back and thank you for doing that.
So I have a clarification on, you said Curtis is not in favor of.
And his reasoning would be.
Truth be told, I got had to get it second need a second. And he explained that he said no to Paige and Paige had to fill it in with me because I was on the front of the. So, but I know that that's. He wasn't in favor of it. I I'm sure there's lots of reasons, um, considering he's a private business, I'm sure it's more expensive for him to. You know, conduct a a service for somebody, um, than just sell them a casket or an urn. If that's mandated mandated and he does a lot of work for us in that cemetery, so. Would it be a hardship for him? Maybe.
I don't think so, because he passes that on to the client.
I understand that, but maybe he's preempting the fact that some people won't be buried there.
Do they have vaults for urns?
Um.
We require you to vote for urns.
So one of the cities.
I don't know that well.
State, no, we don't.
I don't know that you would.
Yeah, Burndale. Has in their rules that cremations need to be placed in a non-compostable sealed container. Um, so something of that nature. In order for it not to, and and a lot of that is just controlled by M D H, you know, they have. They gotta know what's been going into the ground, so nothing leaks out.
Right, and like I said, I mean, I'm just asking, maybe maybe a little clarification in here that, you know. Prema's don't require a vault. Possibly.
Even at even at Fort Selling, um. A few I put. In the ground down there, um, they don't put a vault already.
Generally speaking, there, those spots are hand dug, they're not very deep and.
But I mean for urns.
They're just below the the frost level.
And even like already you wish out the cemetery over there, we put you. Few family members in over there, we just dug it by hand ourselves.
Yeah.
So.
That was all just just a thought on there, maybe specifying that cremains don't require.
And I can look at some of the other sample cities, um, as I'm looking on this to see if there's any, uh, language that they use.
Because as I was reading about this and the the amount of collapse that happens in older cemeteries and stuff like that, I can see that. Uh, originally, I was not in favor. Of of having them just out of the cost. But I can see the benefit.
Yeah, it it happens a lot more than people think, you know.
You know, it. You you bury a family member tomorrow, are you gonna see that grave collapse? Probably not.
But their grandchildren.
But, uh, somebody's going to.
Yeah.
Well, at some point.
And like I say, mo- most often, it's it's at a point where there's little family left coming around to do those things.
Of the ones that aren't.
Right, once it once it finally gets to that point, you know, it's so many generations out that.
It's usually, uh.
Yeah, pretty, yeah, and then, you know. Like I said, then you're left with, we've gotta take care of it, cause otherwise it's like this. So.
And I'm still coming across family members, um. Much like Mike said, that. Were told that it was that the city would take care of any updates to markers and. Um, headstones that have fallen or around that has shifted, um, and I changed my gears. Because I'm trying to be more consistent with this. And the last person I came across was just shocked and he's had his family there for a long time and and. You know, we just need to look at. What we have for staff and what we can do, like Mike said, if 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 our staff is gonna be the one that's. Doing the cleanup all the time, then it's gonna cost the city more, I mean, there's a lot of municipalities out there. Or people that places that own cemeteries and their volunteer organizations that come in and clean up those. Headstones and those markers out of the goodness of their heart, not. You know, just because they want to volunteer time, just like the veterans do when they put up flags. So. I mean, the more we can do to stabilize the earth. That those loved ones are in, the better off the cemetery will be for another couple of years.
Yeah, so.
Is it better than the way you found it?
Uh, I think that, uh, requiring that. Vault is it was gonna be necessary and. But I don't think we need them for cremains, for urns, or for, I think that the non-compost. Compost bowl. Container. Line it up in the one.
Yeah.
Cities.
I can most certainly find language for the urns.
I think that's.
Well, vaults have always been optional. I've purchased, I've purchased two of them, I think many people that do. Bury relatives there, do purchase them, I I don't wanna think about collapsing them, my loved ones, so. Uh, I would am, uh, opposed to it, as I mentioned in the previous meeting where we disclosed this, because I think it increases. People's expenses by about two thousand dollars. To bury their loved one intact. I bought one in twenty ten and it was one thousand two hundred and fifty, that includes the service of having. Company come put it in with a little crane and lower the lid on after you leave, they're heavy, I mean, yeah, the dome blue ones. And I'm, my concern is that that would push some families who, uh, couldn't afford a full funeral over the edge and require them to. Decide to cremate their loved one rather than bury them intact because they can't afford the extra two thousand, maybe they can afford. You know, twelve thousand for a funeral, but they can't afford fourteen thousand or something like that, I mean, two thousand, so. Unless the price of vaults have gone down recently, which I think that's.
That's fair.
What's, uh, what's out there, because again, I know we Google some on the internet, but you. When you buy a wall, you have to buy it pretty much from the funeral home, because they arrange for the company with the. Crane or backhoe with the cables or whatever they use to lower it in and then lower the, uh. Lid on after the family leaves the gravesite, so. I buried my relatives, uh, intact, and I would not wanna. Somebody with a limited budget to be forced into deciding they have to cremate because they can't afford that additional. Thousands of dollars of expense. The checks are pretty substantial in the funeral home, and I've written a couple of them, so.
That's actually a really good comment, and maybe I can spur that back to Mike is. Knowing the machinery, the equipment that needs to bring the vault in. What is the future potential damage to the properties having to do so?
No more so than it is now.
Okay.
Now they're digging with a backhoe or, you know, they got the pickup that comes in that has the crane on it. You know, there's multiple different options, I don't think it's anything different than what it is now.
So we're not running a risk of damaging anything else.
You can't bring that. I mean, in order to get that weight, you gotta bring large equipment, and you can't bring large equipment into the cemetery.
And we have to remember that if. You, even if we don't require it, that doesn't mean that everybody is gonna be buried without a vault, right? Statistically, I wouldn't surprise me if half the people buried there now have vaults, I mean, I. I never considered burying one of my relatives without one, but that's my choice and I. And decided to come up with the funds to do that.
Yeah, well, obviously, it would be a point of approval and then moving forward, not retroactively, I'm not going to ask that you. You know.
No.
Assume your parents and then put your parents back in there, you know, that's that's unheard of, but, um. It's just, I I'm more, uh, my biggest concern is the stability of that hill.
Dad's up on the high top, on on high ground, so.
So it's not gonna slip and slide down, but.
But, uh, no, uh. Seriously, uh. I I see Ron's point and it it's valid, but. Uh, I would have to disagree, I think that it's probably in our best interest. And the cemetery's best interest.
So other than finding language, um. That I can put in there to take care of remains, um. The way that this is in here, we can move forward with the public readings. Is that my feedback?
I believe so.
No.
No, you got something else, Mike? Um, just something quick that I kind of caught fate.
Well, I'm glad you looked at it.
Uh, subdivision three. On section six.
Okay.
You're red right in there where it says all landscaping, grading and seeding shall be done by the city.
Yes.
I don't like how vague that is.
Okay.
I think I know what you mean. But going back to what we talked about on the responsibility or. Or maintenance in the city. Um, because actually, if you go to section ten, subdivision one. You kind of address it there. With general care assumed by the city, shall no case mean the maintenance repair or replacement of any marker or memorial placed or erected upon lots nor. Doing of special unusual work in cemetery. But then it says. But it's kind of a contradiction to what you have up here.
So that is a good point, in two two other cities, they. Did not have a perpetual care fund section of their ordinance. And our original ordinance, obviously, was only in the black, that language. And I wanted to make sure that there was something in there that. Went off that same discussion where we don't move erect or lift up stones to that nature. If we're doing anything like removing a tree, uh, replanting a tree. Or seeding where seeding is necessary, it's our responsibility.
And that's, I mean, I know what you mean.
Right, but you think it'll get interpreted wrong?
You know, all landscaping, when you say all landscaping, then you come back to individual plots, right? If they're low and they need to be raised, that's technically landscaping. Maybe you and I can get together.
And just change a little language.
Verbiage here, maybe change that up just a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm not looking to do anything crazy from what you have, just tweak that a little bit so that the city. Is covered there more, I think.
I'll open to that.
That was really my only thing, I mean, I just, I saw those two kind of.
Sure.
Clashing against each other, and I'd like to straighten that out a little.
Well, I'll work on some more language and, uh, the urn portion of it, and I'll bring it back to the work session, we've got time. And. If the next.
Sounds good.
If the next version is good, then we can move forward with the public reading.
Very good.
Uh, the last thing I need is appro- the the, yeah, I'm out. Approval needed a resolution two thousand twenty five oh eight. This is the resolution approving the draft plan of the amended well wellhead protection plan that the public hearing has done.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash oh eight.
All second thought.
Uh, is there any discussion on it? All's in favor? I opposed. Hearing none, resolution passes.
Uh, then I just have a couple of dates for, um, the council, uh, the. Planning commission's scheduled meeting is June eighteenth. Um, we did not hold our May meeting, we also did not do our, um, light tour. I did not have a quorum and I had one person sick, so. Um, we will try to do it in June. We just didn't have it.
So we still are looking for another. Question.
Well, yes, that's in addition to, but, um, at the May planning meeting, we were gonna do the light tour.
Sure.
And we never had a meeting because we didn't have enough people to come. To, we're out of town, one was sick. Yeah, so it didn't make sense to have it, so we're gonna try it again this month. June nineteenth is, uh, holiday, so these, our city offices will be closed, including the D M B. June twenty third is your next work session. Uh, July fourth is the next holiday, the city office will be closed, and then July seventh is your regular council meeting. Report from my office, um. Been working basically the last month, um, on the ordinances that you've, uh, requested. Uh, I'm still working with, uh, Tyler attorney and I working with. The attorney for Mike Marie's request, um, I've had slow movement on that. Otherwise, yeah, it's just been business as usual. With the park opening and golf course opening day has been very busy for us. We see by our D M B sales, we've had a really big month.
But I realized they need to license the camper and boat.
Yeah, there was a lot of that. A lot of that, a lot of boats, so, um, yeah, it's just been, it's been steady, so. Know and when when we get bus- busier in other departments and our summer staff comes back. Payroll gets twice as big, so we get busier here. Guys got any questions for me?
Anything to report from the council?
Memorial Day program was well attended. Also, I get your comments, the, uh, cemetery looked great for that part.
The girls softball team. Did great, go and stay. Like by heart. Congratulations to them.
It's a first. Very proud. Also. Other.
Another senior class graduate. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things came to an end in May.
Who am I with the library?
Um, I got communication from Tony Wednesday last week. Uh, it appears he's pushing more towards June, end of June. Um, he's got some health and health issues, so he's a little behind. Um. Um. I text from him. I asked him to reach out to me so that we could get a timeline together. And I have an understanding of what's going on, especially with um. Kelly needing. To know down there, but he has a big project, he's been doing it at the Blue Water Bible Camp. Took up a big portion of his last summer, and he's trying to finish that off. Uh, so he's looking at end of June, mid-June to start. Um. It's good that you asked that because uh one of the um county commissioners wants Kelly and I to come and for. Present to them at their next work session, so we're going. To the July, one of their July work sessions to present what's been going on with our library building, we wanna know what I've heard from K R S, that we got that money from. State, so they are very curious to know what's gonna happen. And so Kelly and I are gonna go down and do a presentation first part of July.
Excellent. I just asked, we have a meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
Could you get me so?
And I'm just waiting on Tony. Yeah.
About to pull it out, if I can answer him. Sorry.
I text him every week. So.
Anything else?
I'm sure there's like ten other things I could tell you about.
There's probably is.
Yeah, I'm kinda like Mike, I don't have much, but then you can talk for half an hour.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, we've been very busy, I'm starting to see land use permits come in, people asking questions.
And I'm sure we'll hear about P E R report.
Yeah, so I, I think, yeah. Everything, we'll have to say that. Yeah.
All right, then. Done. There we go.
All second thought.
Okay. All in favor? All right. We stay on adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Eric, thank you.
You guys, are you guys bored over there?
It's very interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.